All right, we'll move right, are you ready Dave? Move right on.
Yep, yep, yep.
All right, I hear everybody called Rose, Jefferson County Regional Planning Commission. Having a forum here, it looks like all commissioners are present except for Commissioner Lowell, Commissioner Scarlett. Did you cut their pay or something?
Yeah, we will.
All right. Having a forum, I asked the members to review the minutes from the past meeting, any changes, corrections, looking for either approval or to be amended.
I make motion to approve.
Got a proper motion?
The minutes.
And second.
And second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, any citizens input tonight for planning commission? All right. Being done, we'll go to new business. I think the first item on the agenda has been pulled.
Yeah, it is.
So that puts us into the next one, which is preliminary flat approval for an eight lot subdivision to be located on Collins Road, New Market by Harvey and Reba Nicely, and represented by Mr. Randy Corle.
Again, I bring you back before you this subdivision plat, and we've had a little bit of discussion, but basically what they're trying to do is they're trying to provide an average lot size of thirty-seven thousand square feet on these parcels. The Nicely's are basically a situation where they've got a adult child that has gotten into some rebound of a home, but they're trying to help pay for it, and he's got a lot of medical issues. One of the things we talked about before the meeting is the property behind them and to the east of them is owned by the Collins family. That's in progress right now, and there'll be some discussion about this road that's coming off here, which is the only way to really access that lot. Could be adjusted at a future step. So, that's kind of why we're dealing with just the property that they've got right now, and if Reba and Hank really don't want to do anything right here, as long as they live there, because they do a lot of the deer, in fact, we were out there and saw a deer, was born, like I'm working there in their house. So, it's just a plan that they need to be able to be approved. So it's preliminary plat, for anybody has questions.
So if they don't want to do anything with that property right now, is that cul-de-sac going to be, are they going to hold off on building anything there for some time?
They might, yes, because they realize that they could really do one, two, and three to the left of the property first.
Right, right, and that, yeah, that can be handled pretty easily.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, of course, this one's got that access, and as I was talking earlier, if they did come back here and work together, you could almost have four lots that would run this way and three this way.
Now, Mr. Corle, before the meeting, we talked, and he talked about the possibility of going, not doing this, but going this way and opening up this territory back here, correct?
You could see a very faint pencil line here where we were looking at that very thing with them.
So he might come back at some point with an amended preliminary plat, but that would not affect those lots one, two, and three.
Okay.
And we wouldn't even require a preliminary plat for five or fewer lots like that, without infrastructure.
Yeah.
There's one, there's one thing, David, lot three is ninety-one feet wide, and typically we require a setback to be at where the lot is a hundred foot wide. I'm not sure it gets a hundred foot wide all the way back.
No, it doesn't look like it, and I looked at that, and we have the forty thousand square foot requirement for the, for the A1 zone, and in the zoning, it doesn't mention anything about...
The setbacks?
About the setback, let me see.
Well, it's thirty, it's A1, so it'd be thirty and ten.
Yeah, I know what, but it said, usually the setback is where the lot is a hundred foot wide.
I think it's in subdivision.
Let me check the subdivision regulations part of the back.
Do what?
Hundred feet of water, hundred feet of water.
Yeah, yeah, but that's in subdivision, not zoning, not the zoning, it's in subdivision. So it needs to be at least a hundred foot at the building.
Yeah, right there, Randy.
We could, we could adjust the line.
Yeah, you've got some room to do that, I think.
Yeah, it says in here, lots served by both public water and public sanitary sewer shall not be less than ten thousand square feet in area not less than seventy-five feet wide in width at the building setback line, and if it doesn't, if it has lots served by public water and not by sanitary sewer, shall be twenty thousand, of course, forty thousand in A1 district, but they do have to have the hundred foot wide at the, at the setback line.
So if we were to approve this, it would need to be based on the fact that lot three, lot one, two, three would all, would all have to have at least a hundred foot drainage?
Right. And if there's no, no public water, no sewer, it's forty thousand square feet and a hundred and fifty feet wide at the setback line.
Lee, did you just say that, didn't you?
Did you just say that while I was thinking of other things? You said a hundred feet, didn't you? A minute ago? I did hear that.
Hundred, no, hundred and a hundred fifty of that. Been that way forever.
All right.
How long you been playing?
I don't remember.
This is a small track, drainage, are you worried about drainage?
No, I don't see any real problems with it. The slope of the road just barely exceeds twelve percent.
Yes.
Twelve point five percent or twelve point three percent, I'm not looking at the...
Yeah, it was, there was eleven and a half, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so it's, as far as I'm concerned, it'll be compliant.
Yeah.
Plus, you probably have a little bit of play in there.
We will.
When you, when you, when you, when it's constructed.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, anyway. Tim and I went out there and looked at it, and it's, a lot of it's heavily wooded, some of it's really nice grassland.
Yeah, yeah, basically where their home and six and seven are, that's, and that's kind of, as long as they live there, they want to kind of enjoy and preserve that.
It's real pretty back in there, you could see that from the road, yeah. But it looks like it might be, once you get back into the property, I think it'd be fine. It's a little bit steep right here beside the road, but we've, we've seen a lot, a lot of steeper property than that.
Okay.
So I think, I'll recommend for preliminary, and Mr. Corle understands that if there's any changes to the infrastructure, like cul-de-sac and that sort of thing, that we'll need to see a revised preliminary.
Okay. Everybody good with that? Okay, so I think that, you know, I think, so if we give approval for it, I think it should be with subsequent lots one, two, and three, at least, all having at least a hundred foot drainage, so...
That, I agree with that.
So I'll open the floor for a motion or more discussion?
Motion to approve of one, two, and three, at least a hundred.
Okay, that's a proper motion?
Second.
And second, okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed?
It doesn't matter if they want to keep on their...
Give me just a minute, Charlie.
Okay.
Good to see you again, Randy.
Good to see you all.
Thank you. Okay, I think we can go forward.
All right. The next item is update, final review of the proposed resolution to amend the subdivision regulations. And before you, you should have in your copy, their draft copy of that resolution, as far as that goes, and hopefully you've read through this, some of the things that we've discussed before, and my thing is, is anybody have any questions?
Well, I think Eddie does.
All right, okay, okay, Eddie. Oh, you hadn't seen them?
I read them too.
You did?
We got it, Paul, yeah?
You just come up up here and say it. I don't know if we brought a, we found your copy of it.
All right. The first one we've looked at, Eddie, is, it was that...
You certainly like...
Yeah, it's an adequate building site, because we've had so many lots that's come in here on some of these developments, that every first thing you have to do to come in here and ask that for a variance. So basically what we're saying is, is that we said, okay, you're going to bring us a lot here in a topo, and it's going to be steep, then you may have to do some excavation work there to give at least a thirty by forty area there that doesn't exceed seven percent of the, of, I mean, or consisting of seven percent of the total property, but it has to be at least thirty by forty feet wide, and it can't, the slope on that cannot exceed ten percent. So if you were doing a survey and you had a lot there, what you would do is, is you would show on that, on your plat, an area right there that met those requirements.
You going to make the surveyor do that?
What the developer's going to pay you?
I told you you have to raise your rates.
I told, I mean...
You know what they're going to do, they're going to say, I mean, I mean, I'll do what, you know, I'm going to do whatever you guys do. I think surveyors, they're just going to draw a circle and say, there it is, pay me. They're not going to go through all this.
Okay, and that's fine.
You know what I'm saying?
That's fine.
It's be like your topo would take care of this problem.
We were hoping that the surveyor could do that with the topo.
Well, and so here's what I'm going, here's, here's our thing, Eddie, so here's our thing. So then, when we see that on the plat, we're going to take it that it meets the requirements. And so when this guy comes in and says, I can't get my house on there, I said, oh, yes you can, because it says so right here on this plat, that you can get your house on here. Now, if they want to move their house somewhere else, out of that area, this, that, whatever, that's their prerogative.
They're not requiring that they build it in that location.
I know what you're saying.
We just want, we just want to make sure every lot has something that can be built on.
I understand that, but, but if you look at development or people that build, where I think, you know, this is a little no, it's a perfect place for the house, they won't build there, they'll go down in the hole, or they'll be somewhere on the side, they won't do what, you know what I'm saying? They won't put it in the perfect spot, they'll keep that for their chicken house or something. You know what I'm saying? They don't think like we do.
Well, that's their prerogative to do, and all they have to do is, but they'll have to come back for us.
But they have the option.
You know, if the house won't, if, if they come back and says, oh, this is great on this property, I just can't make this work, I need to get, I need to variance on my setback on my property line over here.
I understand. Don't grant a variance, don't grant one, you can't do it, but getting the thirty by forty feet that the surveyor says will work, they're going to say, if he can get a drain field in this property, then he's got a building site.
Well...
That's what, and basically, that, that, and that's the way it is right now.
That's the mindset, yeah.
That's the way it is, if you can get a septic system in, you can get Carter to prove your septic and your reserve, then you've got a building site, because you can get water and you can get power, they'll build it on poles to make code, I mean, it don't have to have a flat site, that's what I'm saying.
I know what you're saying, but this area here, you can't, that doesn't count what Tom Carter proves for septic. This has got to be above, this is above the set area for the septic and, and the reserve, and in the setbacks, within the setbacks.
Have a building site consisting of seven percent of the total property.
And it has to be at least thirty by forty. So in other words, you could get seven percent, it can't be ten foot wide and fifty foot long.
I understand what you're saying.
So, those are the minimum dimensions it's got to be, so...
I think this can be done by you, just by y'all looking at a topo, Terry, I don't think that, you know, does it, because they're not going to build in that site, I'm telling you, they're going to go somewhere and do something crazy.
Well, we've had those topos, Eddie, and we, we still get them back here. I mean, what we're looking at is...
I mean, if you, I'm talking about if it's in, if it's somewhere it's flat, you're not even going to ask for nothing, right? These are on sloped areas, right?
Yeah, and it used to be, Eddie, when you had a septic, and basically, because you know that, that septic had to be on a certain sloped area or whatever, it sort of took care of itself. But when we went to these onsite systems, as far as that goes, and, and the septic, you...
Onsite, you're talking about where they're pumping everything to one spot?
Yes, when we went to those, then, and basically, every...
Well, they're putting them anywhere, then, they could put a house anywhere you want to.
Yeah, and then, but that's just it. Then the people are coming back to us all the time, saying, I can't get my house on here, I need to build right up next to the road where it's flat.
Well, another thing, Terry, they always, you know, they've got a place to build two thousand or twenty-five hundred, and they're building ten thousand foot houses. You know, that's what I see in it, you know, they're going to max it out, no matter what.
Back when your dad was surveying, and you first, first getting started, it seems to me like a lot of the subdivisions went in on farmland that was relatively, relatively...
Well, they took the best land.
Relatively flat, I mean, you know, rolling, and, but you know, we've had a lot of developments that, well, I've tried to go out by the lake, and they, and they build on those steep...
Get on the water, man.
Like Gatlinburg type houses.
But that's, I thought that was the reason for the, you know, for those septic systems over here, so they could utilize that rough land.
They, they are utilizing the rough land. The problem is, is that the land is so rough, you can't, that the people come back in here all the time, I can't get my driveway in, I can't get my house in here.
You need to build five feet.
I know, and they're worrying you to death with those, those variances, and you could be like some other counties, say, you know, we're not going to issue a variance for a side setback at all, because then you're, you're making your neighbor, you know, you're not being fair to your neighbor.
And if they don't, though, they can't ever build on that.
Well, for that particular plan, you brought me your plans, and I'm going to do this, I'm saying, you know, you're in the setback, we're not going to do it, because there's your neighbor over there, he's, he's relying on those setbacks.
I'm just saying, just say no, right?
Correct. And then, then, of course, if he wanted to do something, you're going to tell him the same thing, setbacks are there for a reason.
Yeah.
Well, that, when Eddie said something, it caught my attention there. You're not going to do this for every lot?
Yeah, every lot.
Okay, well, that's what he was telling me.
It'll be for every lot.
Yeah, every lot.
Every lot in the development will have this...
Any, any, but two lotters, right?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Even if it's flat on the board?
If it's flat on the board, it's pretty easy.
Well, still, but I... Seven percent of the total property, what are we talking about here? What are we trying to sell?
Well, let's say, for instance, we got, we got an A1 zone, we got to have forty thousand square foot, so seven, what'd be, twenty-eight hundred square foot?
Twenty-eight hundred.
Twenty-eight hundred square foot, and then, but, but when you get to twenty-eight hundred square foot, so, in, in an area right there, at least, at least it's got to be thirty, it can't be any less than thirty by forty, which is twelve hundred square foot.
Less than ten percent slope.
Yeah.
I.e. buildable area allegedly.
Well, is it seven percent or thirty by forty?
The thirty by forty is the minimum dimension.
I understand that, but on an A1, okay, you're talking about if it's a R1, it would be something else, twenty thousand, so, but the minimum would be thirty by forty.
Yeah.
Right, okay, I got you. So then, on an acre lot, or a forty thousand square foot lot, you'd have to have, I would have to go in there and figure seven percent of that, and we're going to have to find a place that's seven percent of that, that's not over ten percent gray.
Okay.
Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, or if, if, or the developer can make it meet that grade.
They're not going to...
What they're doing is, is that they may have to make some house sites for some of these lots, pre-doing, so, but my thing is this, Eddie...
They won't build there, they'll put their, they'll put their garage there, and they'll go over here somewhere and build, I'm telling you, I run into these people every day, they don't, it don't make any sense, unless you say, okay, house's got to go here, like Carter does, drain field, all right? He ashes the area.
I don't believe they can do that.
Says, drain field goes right here.
Well...
Carter does, I mean, you know, that's what it works.
Once you've got that...
So basically, what we're telling them is, all right, your house has got to go right here, right?
That's...
That's what you're, that's what you want.
Yeah, we want to make sure they have a buildable site.
Your house could go here.
You want within the setbacks.
You tell me they build in that rough place, as long as there's somewhere on there that they could have done.
That's right.
Right, and the, and the, and the...
And I can't see we're gaining one bit.
Well, it is.
The planning division wants to be assured that there's at least a site...
I understand that, I'm trying to figure out a way that, 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 you're not going to make them build on that good spot.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to make them do that, I'm not going to make, all I'm going to say, yes...
That's what you're at, then why are we trying to find?
Because when they come in here, when they come in here and tell me that they don't have a buildable site...
They want a variance.
I'm going to say, oh, no, you do, because I have it right here on this plat that shows me that, and then they're going to come and say, but I don't want to build there, and I said...
Now you've got some, now you've got some bullets.
I've got some bullets.
Okay, I see where, I see where I...
Because right now, I'm, I'm just having to take their word for it, a lot of times, and it ends up being the case.
So then, if they say, okay, they buy this old rough place, and it's steep, and this is the scenario, and they're going to chisel out a place to put it.
Yeah.
You know, like, some of the, or they do, and they've got, they've got that head wall back there, and it's falling down, then they're going to need to get some kind of engineering work done to take care of the, the stormwater...
Yeah.
And the wall, or whatever they do there, that's, that's going to be handled some other way, okay, all right.
Yeah.
So we got to have a ten percent spot somewhere that's thirty by forty.
Yep.
You ever run into a lot that didn't have one of those, Eddie?
Oh, yeah, we've got several of them.
That's a rhetorical question, I know there's some...
I mean, you can go, I mean, you can go through Stonebridge right now, and there's lots up there that, that those people...
Bayberry?
Yeah.
That takes it way back.
That's a good name.
Yeah, I've done, I've done them in there for, I was in nineteen eighty, when was the FDIC, I was taking them back or showing them, and the lots are straight off the road, and there's nowhere to build on any of them, you know?
Still sitting there, too.
Yeah, yeah, they were selling for two hundred bucks.
All right.
So, I mean, I, I just, I don't, I don't know how...
Two hundred bucks is getting right off.
Okay, you don't say that surveyors do that anyway, I like that part.
Well, all we're saying is, on the plat, somebody...
Somebody's going to have to swear to it.
Yep, that's right.
And it's going to be who?
Well...
Not you.
Uh, Tim, will Tim, uh...
You could let...
I mean, Tim can read a topo, I think he can, if he can, I'll show him out.
Well...
That's what you got to do, just read the topo, that tells you what, that'll tell you whether it's there or not.
And then here's the thing is...
But I can't, I can't swear they're going to do it, Terry.
No, we, we get that, we get that.
Well, well, here's the thing, Eddie, when you do your plat, and you're going to sit there, and you're going to tell that developer, say, you know what, I said, here's what I've got right now, and if you want this lot to fly, then you need to bring your excavator in here and grade this out, and get this house site on there, and I can show them.
Well, I'm not going to do that, Tim, I'm going to tell them this, I'm going to say, where you going to build, where you want to build at? Draw me four stakes like Carter does, I'm going to do like Carter does, put me four stakes, don't have to be straight or square, show me where you're going to build, and I'm going to shoot them, and I'm going to show it to you, here's where they're wanting to build.
Well...
Before they get their, but that's, you can't do it in a subdivision.
Why, Ken?
Well, they, who's going to drive the stakes?
Well, they're just wanting you to show them where they can build at.
Yeah.
They don't want you to drive the stakes, just show it on the map. Just a circle, if that's all you need, or square, or whatever y'all want. That's what I think they're asking.
I mean, if the topo does this for you, and you know it does, you can look at the topo, and you can tell whether it is, and I can take your scale down there, and you know what percentage of grade it is, and you know what that is, but you want me to do that and draw a circle right there?
I want you to show an area in there that, that meets those requirements, is what I want, that's what I want to see, and if it doesn't, if it doesn't meet the requirements, it comes in here, and we may, we may approve the lot, but we may not approve, I mean, the plat, but we may not approve that lot, because it doesn't meet the...
Well, I wouldn't, you know, I mean, and I'm just talking to you.
And then it would be up to the developer to make determination if he want to come in there and spend the money to make that lot.
I see people every day, they say, hey, hey, wait a minute, now you're building too close right here, you're in the setback, blah, 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 I would give a variance. If I do, I'd come down on a variance.
Well, they don't give no more.
Well, I mean, I mean, it would have to be something other than the topo to get that variance, because right now, you says you can get one for topographic reasons, and that's what they're throwing at you all the time, I see it. So this is going to take care of that part, right?
Yes, that's what we, yes, that's what we want to get rid of, and because the developer has an advantage over us on that, in the fact that he says, oh, don't worry, because they have to give you, the topo's on the bad, they're going to have to give you a variance.
Exactly, that's what I'm getting at, yeah, that's on there, we can get out of that, you know?
But they're not going to be able to get out of it no more, as far as it goes. And so my thing is, is that, is this, but you know as well as I do what's going to happen, too many people buy land unforeseen, they don't look at the plat, they don't look anything.
Best thing right now.
They just drive out there and look at it, and say, oh, yeah, I can make that work. And then all of a sudden, when they get sit there, then they're saying, you know what, I, I can't do what I want to do, it's going to cost me an extra three or four hundred thousand dollars just to get a driveway in here. So my thing is, is that if that's on there, and they don't look at that plat, it's their own fault.
Let me ask you a question, just, I mean, this is curious, and I'm not, I'm not critiquing your deal or anything, I'm just saying, what are you going to do with that old rough land?
We ain't going to build them.
What are you going to do with it? What's that old boy that owns all that going to, what's he going to do with that old rough land?
What's bigger on it again?
I don't know what he's going to do with it, but my question is this, so basically, so it's, it's this, Eddie, so if it's rough land, and there ain't no use for it, then why is he going to turn around and try to sell it to somebody to build a house on?
It just keeps the world together?
Yeah, you know, so...
Well, I grew up in the, you look, you look at an old farmstead or whatever, the good land was kept for the farming and the working, they built their house on the rough part.
Yeah, I know.
That's just the way it always was. You didn't see a house, an old, where they made, they're living off the land, you didn't see the house out in the middle of the field.
Yeah.
It was tucked up in a cedar thicket, or toward the road, or it wasn't out there where they worked, and that's kind of the rules that you use for all those years, that, hey, man, like your papaw, he said, you, huh, you ain't putting that out there, that's where, you know, that's...
That's the best tomato land we've got.
That's the best land we got, we're going to put it over here in this rough stuff. So, but, but now we don't depend on the land for a living as much as we did.
So, so, there again, like I say, you don't, this, this...
I, I hope this works, I mean, I'm going to, whatever you do, I hope this works for you.
Well, time will tell, we may be back in here and finally say...
Where did you come up with this at?
Soon here.
Huh? Y'all had a vision?
Brain work.
Actually, some of this stuff come from above us, was passed down, saying that we need to start looking at these things.
Well, I understand that, but you know, you're just talking about excessive rock, I mean, that throws Rocky Valley out.
Well...
Okay, you see what I'm saying, I mean, just to, you can be hard, you can be as, as tight or loose with these as you want to be, you know what I'm saying?
There's, yeah, there's still room for interpretation.[1582.12] There's, yeah, there's still room for interpretation.
Uh, uh, ro- uh.
Excessive rocky property.
What, what constitutes that?
Rocky Valley, you may have to have a two acre tract instead of an acre.
Well, you gotta get your drain filled in.
I know, you may have to have three acres. And you may have to get your thirty by forty in.
Well, between the rocks. Between the rocks, okay, I got you. Course, the floodway, flood area floodway, that's a given, the king can't build in it, well, they do. They will.
Alright, well.
You don't watch them move that.
Yeah.
I, I know that.
Uh. What about this ten percent, where did we, an average of slope?
Well.
Wait a minute, that's the whole, oh, seven percent of it, this has to have a ten percent.
Yes, just seven percent, yeah.
Not to exceed, that's gonna be tough in a lot of places to get that done, isn't it?
Well, that's what I'm saying, the, if, if the developer wants that lot.
We trying to get their lot sizes bigger, is that what we're after?
Well, no, not necessarily. A- all I'm trying to do is, is that the lot sizes, when the lot comes in here, there's somewhere in here that there's a place that says that they can put a daggon house on.
Yeah, we want to make sure each lot has a buildable site and we're trying to, we're really kinda trying to define.
I mean, that's a criteria that I use to, to design by, it's gotta have a place for building site or.
Right.
Because a two acre tract will bring the same money as a one acre tract or a five acre tract if it has the building site.
I know, that's, that's just it.
And that's what we try to do.
This thing sorta defines in the French Commission decides what a building, what a buildable site is.
If it has a buildable site, and then we're getting to, we, we've got so many.
Terry, what we thinks building site may not be to these folks, but it's gonna be, I see.
Well, I, I. I, I know, I, I, all along, I've always thought that what we had in place took care of it. What I'm finding out is, is that, and we found it here is, is that we're getting more and more people that have to come in here on some of these developments. And, and, and are just begging, you know, they said, I've spent all this money and, and I can't do this.
Maybe out of that good ground to develop now, we're having to, just while we're in this steep rough stuff.
Could be the truth, could be the case.
Yeah, that's true.
Well. That, that's, that's.
I'm not arguing with you no more about it, cause if you've got your mind set up, you're gonna do it.
Well, I, no, we haven't hugged them yet.
Well, I'm just thinking that, you know, that, uh. I mean, I'll do, you know, I'm gonna do whatever you, you asked us to do, but you're gonna have trouble with this surveyor, I mean, it's not gonna be, they're just gonna do that and say, let's go.
Well.
You know, I know what.
That, they may do it Eddie, but here's the thing is, is that when the people come back in here and I'm gonna look at that plat and I'm gonna say, I'm sorry, this right.
Your surveyor said you had one.
Your surveyor says that you can build a house right there.
Don't go through Eddie Garrett.
Get in line.
No, what I, no, what happened is, is that their recourse is, is they'll, they need to go back to the people that sold them the property.
Well, yeah, that's.
True.
So.
Well, no, because the lot won't, uh, they won't be, they, you won't get that far because you.
Well, it should be, you build them.
You're not gonna be able to do it on lots that's already down.
Yeah, I know, no, 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 it's.
So you're not gonna have that problem, cause they'll be, they'll be a building site on there. If we didn't, I'll say, hey, you gotta have your ten percent, whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, what else you got?
Alright. The next one is, is, uh, oh, was there any, any other questions from anybody on, uh, adequate building sites, what we discussed, okay? Alright, the next one is, is arrangement, and this Eddie has come, this came from us. This actually came from John Neal, was on flag lots, on existing roads.
He didn't say nothing about them three flag lots I done for him, did he?
He didn't mention those.
No, he didn't, we didn't hear about that.
Uh, no, hi- his thing was, is that, uh. He, he's. His big thing is, is it, is that we're getting, we can get too many driveways coming off an existing county road, so.
And I told Eddie what it was going to roll the, I mean, he, he.
Well, I know that.
I did.
But it all, it's all.
But I didn't bother your book.
You did, that's exactly right, there was nothing that, that you didn't do, that was alright, as far as that goes. But the only way I, the only way I know how to make flag lots, i- if either eliminate them, if you're gonna allow them, is that you're gonna have to put, we, is, is, is the stem length.
Yeah, prevent it from being stacked.
Well, you're not gonna have, uh, you're not gonna have any if they're not gonna be over seventy-five foot long, that's gonna do with all of them, you're not gonna have any. I know what you're up to.
But you know what the other option is that.
Well, we haven't said.
Put a wrench in this, is, you know, the, the, the easement we, thing we have across one lot to another lot.
They're all on flags.
Then that's especially, yeah.
And they're talking about twenty-five foot easements.
Or you've got fifty foot, you can do three lots.
And I fought for that.
All that's on a flag.
I fight against that because of family.
Well.
I don't think you should do away with that.
Well, I'm not saying we're doing away with it.
No, you're not right now.
All I, look, we, that seventy-five feet, that was something that we put down here, uh, basically as far as that goes, cause we're looking, it could be more than that, alright? Only thing I'm saying is this, is that somewhere along the line in there, if you're wanting to eliminate the number of driveways you're gonna keep coming off. On, on a county road right there, eh, you know, you could still, the easement's still gonna be in there, you're still gonna get those driveways, but you're not gonna get as many more.
The, the flags can't be up, but, but five hundred and thirty-five from the next one?
Yeah, well, here's what, here's the thing. If you're in A-one zone Eddie, you gotta have forty thousand square foot and you look at, you go seventy-five foot deep, it's gonna take five hundred something f- square feet just to get you, just a, a lot in there.
You're right, I don't know.
But here's what I did, I, I went back and I did the math on this and I took a distance of road down through there. And I sat down and I said, okay, if I put in these new guidelines and I figured out how many lots I could get. And then I went back and I said, okay, what if everybody put in a hundred and ten foot down there? And they got a whole bunch more lots down through there i- i- if the seventy-five foot stem didn't come into play, it wouldn't work. So which, here's the thing, so you still got, you still got, ended up getting more driveways, but the driveways are spaced more apart.
Yeah, I see where it come from, but your math is, is this seventy-five by five thirty-five is, is crazy, cause you can't use that because you got your front setback, got your house, got your rear setback. You can't get that in seventy-five.
I know, I know, I know it, I know what that, I say.
So, basically what you, you'd look at, you'd want a nice lot that's a forty thousand feet, which would be about, about two hundred by two hundred would be perfect. So then you'd need to let them go two hundred foot deep for your flag.
Well.
That would be a, one of them good lots.
I, I, to me, a hundred and ten, down a road, a hundred and ten foot wide lot to me, the only way the road frontage is good, okay? And then whatever it takes to get back there to basically get your, uh, forty thousand square foot.
A lot of times, you know, you, you try to get your driveway, your, your house, you get everything, you can't do it on, and your side setbacks, it's hard to do it on there. It'd have to be a really good lot to do it on a hundred foot or a hundred and ten, wouldn't it? It'd have to be a really good lot to do that.
Well. All I know is, is that the reason this is in here was to.
To try to.
To eliminate as many, so many driveways.
To do them on the, 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 the secondary road, like your subdivision roads where everybody needs to be.
There you go, whatever.
That's what I'm saying, the main road, and, and, and we run into that in other counties, where they say, hey, this may be, it's not an old material, it's not a major collector, not even a minor collector. But it may be someday.
Yeah.
So.
But I'm trying.
So we'll do it off the subdivision roads rather than the, I understand where you're coming from there.
Yeah.
But I don't know about these, this, uh.
But the seventy-five feet, that, that can change, and it probably does need to change. I just put that in there, when I started with those numbers, I, I was going as an example.
Well.
Okay?
So what we've been doing is flagging one back a thousand foot back there, cause that's where Junior wants to build his house. He wants to go to the back of the farm and build his house, and it's a thousand foot from the road, and we gotta put a. We gotta put a stem on it back here to get him. Now, can you do a, something that would let a man do that, a five acre exempt or? In Knox County, the way they do it is, they don't, the stem is not counted in your area. You know, like you ask for to, 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 uh, uh, forty thousand square feet? You can't count, the, the, the stem part don't count in the area, you gotta have it plus the stem.
Okay.
We don't care how long the stem is, but it does not count in your forty thousand.
Is it just a right of way?
No, it could be fee simple, but they're still not gonna count it, you can't count it towards your acre.
It's like us not counting below the ten oh two, for example.
Correct, correct, because it's not usable land other than access or your utilities.
But when you do that, when you sell, when you do that plat though, when that's, and you need to fee simple, you gotta show that as acreage in that track.
They convey it at acres, but like I said, Knox County makes me.
Tell you how big that is, it's gonna be.
You gotta have, they, they don't care how big that is, they wanna know the area behind it.
Yeah, okay.
Is it at least, is, is this property back here, uh, i- does it comply with your, with your zoning regs? Is it, is it forty thousand?
Yeah.
We don't care if it's ten, ten thousand feet back there, that's your baby, you gotta put water and sewer back there, but you better have, you gotta have your, your minimum.
I can see that.
Area back here.
Yeah, I, I don't have issue.
You know what I'm saying, if, if we run them back there a thousand foot, it's fifty foot strip. Well, and now you're asking for us forty thousand square feet, well, then they've got that thirty by forty lot you're talking about.
Yeah, I can see that.
Yeah.
You see what I'm talking about? So, that's the way they get by, I'm not saying that that may be something you wanna think about, but.
Would make sense.
They want us to have, you gotta have acre wherever, now you, now you get your access to it, you can't count.
And they count that separately.
Yeah, well, you're conveying it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's real, it's real property that goes.
You gotta have, you gotta have, you know, whatever it is, whatever zone you're in, you gotta have that much square foot to, but the, your, your strip going to it, whether it's fee simple or right of way, whatever, it don't count. Toward the, cause you can't use it for drain field or, it's.
Really anything.
It's for access and utilities.
Mm-hmm.
Is that three fifty foot?
No, that's the twenty-five down there.
Oh, they did?
Alright.
Twenty-five foot runoff?
There was, there's one other thing in here too that, that I looked at on this, is this, is that, uh. On your stem, on your stem lots, okay, on your stem drives going in. We, the, I think, my thing is this, is that I think that those, that whatever's there, should, the grade should not exceed what our minimum grade is for a road. And the only reason I say that is, is because when you put a driveway in there like that, and an ambulance or a fire truck has to go up it, and they've got something going like this to get up there. Then, I don't thi- I don't think that ma- I don't think that's a good thing. I think if you have your stem coming in there, whatever it is, you may have to grade part of it out to get it down to grade. But I don't think it should, anywhere on, up through there to where you get the house site, should exceed what our gra- our minimum grade is for a.
What is it?
Well, it's fifteen percent.
It's twelve percent on a certain, on, on, on.
It depends.
Access roads.
We designed our county roads at ten, and sometimes they'll.
And, and seventy for major collectors.
Well, I mean, I'm not about our subdivision roads that we do our interior, most time, we try to design them, we, we're shooting for ten percent.
Yeah.
It don't always ha- happen, it always runs eleven or twelve, but we're trying to get ten.
Well, I'm just saying that for that, for that very reason, that I, I think that, 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 uh, the stem, the stem area in there, if the grade should not exceed the grade.
I mean, that would be your, it, it, wouldn't that be just stem, that'd be any driveway, what, what's the difference?
It's just because stems are, you typically are so long, and basically.
They're not gonna be long enough.
They won't appear on top of the mountain, and they have a fifty foot right of way goes up through there, two thousand foot that gets up there, and then if there's a fire or emergency, then our vehicles.
How else we gonna get up there?
Well, they, they gonna have to do some grade work to get the grade down there then, just like everybody else. They may have to, but, I, I mean, I, I looked at that and I thought it was a good deal, but it's not in this. It's not in it, but I thought it was, it was something that needed to be in there, uh.
But just on the, oh, the, 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 uh, oh, I see what's not in there.
Yeah, I had it.
For the stem?
Yeah.
Well, I got mixed feelings about that, uh, I think if there's more than one person using it, like those, uh.
Family.
Family deal, I don't know if you ought to be stricter on them, if it's just one person, let him go forty percent, do what he gotta do. Don't matter, but if there's more than one using it, I would think it would need to be a little flatter.
Yeah, especially if there were addresses often.
Correct. That, that may be a way that you might address what you're trying to do. You know? If it's one of those easement deals, make them be, uh, if it's over ten percent, you gotta pave it or something, I don't know.
Well.
And I have seen those lots you're talking about, but the fire truck can't physically can't pull up it.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's got any water on it, it just don't have enough motor, it can't get there.
No.
But I don't know that, I don't, you know.
Alright. Well, like I say. Any other feedback on, on the stem, John Neal not here, and that was, this is his, this was his.
No, the paper here pays too, it's John Neal's. I'm sorry, I missed.
Oh, it just says in here that, basically, the next one is, is that on the plat, that variances to setback requirements or location proposed will be not, will not be granted for this subdivision. It's just a, it's just a, it's just what you're saying. Alright, so.
It don't, it doesn't.
And the only reason he wants to don't there is so is.
Just telling them that we're not gonna give it to you.
It just says that part of the Jefferson.
Maybe you won't come and ask it for one.
Port, part of the board, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals, Jefferson County, no variances, or to setback requirements, location proposed building, uh, will not be granted for this subdivision. If you have that statement on the plat, as far as that goes, then that, that's the extent of it, is that not it?
So you won't, the surveyors put that on the plat?
They just, you put that s- on there, all you're doing is putting the public on notice that, that this is.
Just gonna put us, make us a stamp.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if that's gonna hold up in court, but that's what I want to.
I don't know if any of this, where.
I don't know if the variance thing, cause each one's gotta be addressed on its own, on its own, um.
Can we legally say no more variances?
I don't know, I think, I think that if it was ever went to court, I think the judge would say.
That's what you're, that's what you're saying.
Look at it.
Yeah, I know it.
I, I don't know that we can do, I don't know that we can do that either, but, um.
Well, like I say, that may or may not fly.
I know what you're trying, you're trying to get him.
If you run that by Doug and see what he says.
I won't get no answer by October. Get one tomorrow.
What's section A six?
If we can't stamp it like it, can't we just turn them down a little bit, Tom?
Yeah, well.
Well, I think once the word gets out, and I certainly do my part, I'm gonna tell them, hey, they'll, they'll say, hey, they're, I mean, I say, hey, they're not gonna give you no variance for this, cause I'm not gonna do it, cause you're not gonna get it.
What was section A six, around the sub rigs?
But what, what section?
Says it's been deleted?
A six in the sub rigs.
A six? Let's find out. Article three.
Deleted in its entirety.
Eleven. Three A six. That's the thing that hit me the most with that, um.
New state law that came into play, uh, about the, the, the. The way we understood it is basically is this, is that if you've got a development, you're on a county road, okay? And there is no set right of way that's not being purchased or anything else, let's say your property says it goes to the center of the road.
Of course, a lot of them do.
Okay, so before we used to require that twenty-five foot off center line.
From the, from the, from the center.
The way I understand that, the way I understand that now, we can't do that without.
Oh, yeah, we got that, uh, we law even got that took care of, yeah, I like that, now what, what we're doing here.
That's, Billy Knight told me.
Now, I sent them some money, I, I think, no, what we were having is, is this, I don't know if you're familiar with Thorn Grove Pike?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a fifty foot from center line.
Okay.
That's what they were asking, and what they're doing, they're, they're acquiring, and I know where you're going, but you don't like it because your acquiring is right of way for free.
I know it.
And it's going through houses and chicken houses and barns and everything, and that's just too wide.
Well.
And I say, if you want it, condemn it, pay them, take it, go through the process of empty domain.
Yeah, that's what it's for. So, but, but the county's not gonna do that, so what we're, the only thing we're saying is, is that we're taking that out. We're saying, okay, we're taking that out, but what we're gonna do is this, is that depending on where, uh, no matter what, now then, if you come off of a county road. And wherever you determine the right of way is on that road or whatever, from the center line road, you're, 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 we're also putting in here, now your setback's gonna be fifty-five feet. So we used to call it twenty-five, then I have thirty foot.
That thing that you're talk, that, that lot you're talking about, that didn't apply if I were developing it, then I have to go back and, then they, then I've got to, I've got to.
Like when you're building the road.
It goes right back to work, no, if I cut that up in the subdivision, start cutting lots out through there, then that law don't apply, I've still gotta dedicate then. On that law that we're, that we're talking about that got passed.
Only in existing, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, see, we didn't.
And I have to dedicate my subdivision road, of course.
But we didn't read it that way, the way the sta- the way the, the statute read. It said in there, it basically is that it looked like it was a taking.
It kept them from stealing land is what it amounts to, and I don't see it that way. We've got a lot of, of, especially over, around the mines, the nice store, all that area.
Yeah.
Where everybody's land goes center of the road because they can sell their, their mineral rights, I mean, it's just the way it is, and I don't have a problem with it, but what we did, we dedicated right of way. We let them own the mineral rights, but we, we, we just made the right of way fifty foot, a right of way for public.
The right, the right to use the property.
Correct, but we left the ownership underneath. Or, yeah, or the mines would have little strips everywhere, wherever roads at, that they can't get the mineral rights to.
Okay.
You know, so, that, 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 uh, that, that right area will take care of itself as far as that goes.
So then there was no need to delete that then, but I thought there had to be a statement in there, the way I read it stating that, that, way.
We'll go, I'll go back and read my copy again and see, but I thought when we were working that draft, that, that, uh, they insisted that if we're gonna put a hundred lot subdivision up here, we're gonna dedicate. You know what I'm saying, this was, uh, one lotters, two lotters, things like that, but on big developments, that, that, I think we had to dedicate, but maybe they got that together, but I, I don't know.
You know, the way the law's written, it talks about the nexus between. Obtaining the property that way and using the property for the benefit of that development. And they talk about like, um, examples that I've seen in the past, like in the two court cases, Supreme Court cases, they cited in that. In that, um, in the, um, in the law, where people were, or a city or county would get. An exaction, money from, from the developer.
Yeah.
And they'd spend it in a different part of the county or a different part of the city on a traffic line that didn't even affect.
Hard to swallow, and it's not happening here.
But the thing is, if you, if you obtain a right of way from, from an existing proposed development along an existing road. Theoretically, that property is to be used with that road, and not somewhere else in the county. And you have the road, if you ever need to widen it, if you ever need to change the utilities, or, or improve drainage or anything. So I kinda question whether that is illegal to do that.
Well, they got kinda carried away with their, with, by their power, by, by making you dedicate. I mean, common sense is common sense. You know, to me, uh, i- i- if, if you're not developing it, then they don't need it. And how many people I know that's got their fence right up beside the asphalt, sure.
Nobody we know.
Nobody we know. But you know what I'm saying? But if you, I have no problem dedicating it if we're doing a big development. I don't have no problem.
Okay.
I never did.
Alright, but here's the question is, is that.
Have developers and stuff scream about that?
Oh, gosh, yeah, I'd set it off, said, hey, we're gonna give twenty-five. Uh-uh, that goes down right beside the edge of the pavement.
But see, right now, the way I read that law is, is if that developer comes in here and says, I'm not giving that, he don't have to.
They don't have to privilege plan it. That's where they got him, Terry.
That's what I'm not a hundred percent sure on. Cause we discussed that, whether that would be the case.
We've not had any court cases that redefine this at all yet, that I know where.
They don't, they want, they want a privileged plan. So you gotta have acquit access, and this is what it takes to do what you wanna do, then you're gonna have to do it. You know, you know what I'm saying?
And that, that's the way it is with new roads and the, and the requirements for land and everything.
That, 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 the way we got away with that property line was that the easement would still be twenty-five, minimum of, of twenty-five foot. From the center line. That's what, I don't care where you're going to.
Well, then that's the case, then, then we don't need to delete that section, correct?
Maybe not.
You might wanna look at that, but.
I'm, 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 let's hold on a minute, um.
Alright.
Um.
No, put it in, that's the only law we got.
Well, it, it states that you've got to put it, that it states.
If, if it's a, if it's a major development, and I don't know what they're calling major, whether it's over five lots, if it's ten, if it's twenty.
It doesn't designate. It just says that basically you have to be careful, when, and, and, and when you require people to give land and taking right there. For public use, taking a private land for public use, and that's the way I interpreted it.
Did you get Doug's opinion on that?
I did. And Doug says it's got to be in, it's, we've got, it's got to be stated in our subdivision.
Ninety-nine percent of the people is not gonna care if you dedicate twenty-five to the center line. Now, if it gets more than that, they're gonna throw a fit.
Well.
You know, you know what I'm saying, but y'all have never asked me to dedicate any more than twenty-five, or what was there anyway, so. You've never asked me to do anything like that, or took somebody's land more than that. Twenty-five's pretty much a standard rule.
I know, but we've looked at it, and, and we, we, we had developments that we were gonna ask for more.
Some places require that you.
Cause we looked at, yeah.
Dedicate pro- property for a park, you know, in, within the development. I mean, I'm not talking about a P U D, I'm talking about.
They're dedicating it to the county?
To the county or city, yeah.
County will keep it up. That might work in her favor.
No, we don't wanna do that.
Yeah.
But anyway, um.
Yeah, I was going through that right.
I'm not a hundred percent sure, sorry about that, Terry, cause it's not been. Further defined by any law court.
Alright, all I know is that somehow that, that language has to end up in our, in our sub rigs according to Doug.
Cause it's new law.
It's new law, and it says that you have to just put it in there so that the people know it, and they can read it and see it. That that's their right to come back on you, if they want to, and sue you for damages, and you may have to end up paying them for those, for that.
You're not gonna do nothing against the law, Terry.
Well, I, I, I know, but I'm just saying, it, the thing was, there, first, I've heard people say, this is nothing. I mean, then I heard, you know, everybody else is saying, oh, it needs to go in there, it needs to go in there, so. I've, I've just try, I was just trying to cover us.
Leave it in there?
Just leave.
Leave it like it is?
Leave, but we got, but we, we gotta have, but we gotta add that other statement.
Uh, what are they calling that new bill? Just say that leave it in there and under it said, and subject to this, and there's a new law and you're covered.
Well.
That's your lawyer question here.
It's supposed, it, it, it tells you exactly how it's supposed to state it in there. Alright. Alright, so maybe we don't wanna delete section four, and if that's the case, we don't have to do that. We may not need section five then. Because I was putting that in there in case I, that the property lines with the soon road, I'm at least getting a fifty-five foot setback. Off, off the road.
Twenty-five thirty, it saves it ahead then.
Yeah.
Well, you could, you could, you could just say, uh, from the center line, it shall be at least fifty-five from center line, rather than the, from the setback line.
Well, uh.
That's what you're trying to get to.
I see, I put from the front property line. So if the front property line was the center of the road, if, if that's what they open.
Foot out.
Well, if it's twenty-five foot out, then, uh.
It's gonna be seventy-five then?
No, it should, no, it probably, uh.
Go back to thirty?
It says the planning commission may require smaller building setback line in conformity, if, you know, if it goes back to a fifty-foot right of way.
I think you can kill that whole little deal there by saying it has to be at least fifty-five from center line, let the rest of the road.
I think center line's the right way to say.
I think it is too. Cause it's, we know where that's at.
Well, it's either that or where the right of way is, and in other words, if you're gonna road that's got, uh, a seventy-five foot wide right of way, then you're.
On a, on a, that's on a fifty-foot road.
Yeah.
I'm with you, I understand.
Alright.
That's what you say, a fifty-foot road.
Yeah, yeah. Alright. I think that covers this right there either way. Uh, it just covers on setback.
Yeah, and the thing about the setback, setback, if the road's ever widened by T-Dot or the county, they don't have to buy. Generally won't have to buy the buildings, the houses.
Builders, especially spec builders, they're gonna put it right, I mean.
I know, right on the line.
They tell me, I mark that front setback, and that, and I mean, I'll say, well, alright, scoot it back, get the porch out of it.
Yeah.
Cause they're gonna put it as close to the road as they can get it, and save on the utility, save on the driveways, they save, I mean, that, you know, they're gonna put it right as close as they can get it.
Yeah.
Well, even if the lots have got a real good building site back here, they're still gonna put it up here.
Okay.
A thirty by forty with.
Thirty by forty, no ten percent, yeah.
You mind any questions on the, on what we just discussed right there for section four and five in here? I still know we gotta have that statement's gotta be added in there. No, no, uh, that, that, that's what the law states. That it, it needs to be in here, addressed in there, so that people can read it and see that they have the right, that if you were required to, to provide others, other things. That basically you have the, that they have the right to sue you. They have the right to sue us. If we were making, that's why, I mean.
Anybody can sue anybody for anything.
I know, but it just says, I mean, that's just in there, alright. Alright, so section six, basically this is it. It's changing, uh, our street whis.
First, for small streets, the ones that are residentially oriented, not the main, not, not for somebody putting in a collector's street or extending. Highway one thirty-nine or something like that.
No, nothing like that, so.
No, this is for like, um, residential streets where people actually get out, walk and.
Yeah, the subdivision.
Suburban subdivision type developments.
So what's gonna happen is this, Eddie?
Do you want them wider?
The reason we want them wider?
Sidewalks and.
I, my uppers wanted sidewalks. And I talked to Charles, Charles said, I don't want sidewalks, I don't want the maintenance. So, only thing I know to do is give them a place to walk is, you widen the pavement, you give them a place to walk on the side of the pavement.
Yeah, the sidewalks and other thing too, those stop signs doesn't fit up in them too.
Well.
They have a hard time, cause they're all, they wanna put their mailbox behind them, how they gonna get to them?
Well, now you're gonna have to.
If you got it to where you didn't have sidewalks, you know, you don't have to have the cluster.
The sidewalk's gonna be paved, just paved.
I had run into that issue with the post, with the post office before about their, their mail.
This also came from, in my, in my subdivision in Knoxville, we don't have sidewalks, but we have like, a road that's wider than twenty feet. I think it's probably twenty-four feet. But anyway, people, people walk and ride bikes and do all that sort of thing there. There's enough room for two cars to pass, and somebody to be walking safely if they're face, if they're facing traffic.
Yeah, I just always said, go to Patriot Hills and watch two concrete trucks. It's pretty, they're both on the curb.
I know.
Lot more drivers.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, so.
Going from twenty to twenty-eight, that's a pretty big step.
It's four feet on each side.
Four feet on each side.
What's your, what's your, uh, sidewalk had to be?
Well, we're, usually, usually there are five, but we're getting by with four.
I thought there were three.
No, well, these, they're usually five, but we're going to, we, we got four foot, that's what we've got. Charles can live, Charles lived with that one. He, he was okay. He said, it's easier for me to maintain a paved area than it is for me to have to worry about.
Oh, absolutely.
I understand that.
Yeah, so, uh, and there's no curbs or anything like that. Okay.
Can you get away from tree, tree root?
Charles will be required to maintain this walking, designate walking.
He will, yes.
Be like a regular road.
Be like a regular road and stuff, but you gonna hack up, strap it?
Yeah.
Yeah. It'd be strapped, but we all know when you pass roads and stuff like that, you have to change in elevation, you don't have a smooth walking path as you do with the sidewalk, it's not kept like that. So if there's tripping hazards, if there's hazards that come in repairs of this, is Charles liable for those?
I guess.
See, how many, how many times have you heard somebody suing, just tripped on the sidewalk?
It happens.
Well, you're gonna have catch bases, you're gonna have it, that's for dang sure.
Takes them back for three years.
Well.
At three years. So who's gonna, is the, who are, that of subdivision, he'll be liable for the first three years.
You're gonna have catch bases in that area for sure, won't you?
You'll have some, yeah, you're gonna have to work.
And I, I just, just, that kind of mind was looking at that, you know, it's.
Well, I, I.
I just, just ask him.
I, all I know was, is that the request was made, and so they wanted to see sidewalks.
Bicycle tire car.
And, and here's my thing too, I know the upkeep on sidewalks is more, but if you go, if they're trying to make these areas nicer. And you go to nicer areas, you see sidewalks, whether Charles wants to upkeep them or not.
I know.
I mean, what do the people want? What are the tax dollars being spent on?
Well.
I, I mean, I, I'm just asking those questions. I guess playing devil's advocate a little bit there, but, yeah, that's, those things I had to maintain. With what we do, that I don't really like, but I still had to maintain it, as part of it.
Well, we've never had sidewalks in the county, and I don't know if any county requires it.
Yeah.
That I know of.
But where did the push come for, from, from the sidewalks?
Well, I'll tell you who it comes from, I'll tell you nothing.
Okay.
Katie ain't got no sidewalks for her.
Nope.
We don't let, I didn't have asphalt until about twenty, where I grew up at.
I didn't either.
You know. You hauled it in from a co-op, fifty gallon bounce.
All I, listen, all I know is, is this is the only way I knew how to make this work, that was, where it didn't put a burden.
It, it's definitely a step up from where we're at. I just thought, you know, that's a situation that's probably gonna rise somewhere down the road.
Yeah, it's probably right.
Somebody's gonna try to do it.
Hopefully it ain't the first three years, I heard after the three years.
Yeah, doing it on one side.
Well, I thought about that, but then, then you gotta have your back in traffic, when if you walk that road, you go back.
They're, they're gonna walk where they wanna walk anyway. On these marginal, on these marginal subdivision streets, they're not gonna stay there, it's not gonna matter.
Well, in my, in my subdivision, the road's probably twenty-four feet wide, and you walk facing traffic, no matter which way you're, you're going. And there's so little traffic, and it's like three hundred house in my subdivision, it's not like it's, it's Farmington subdivision off of Ebenezer Road.
Yours got.
Try to get that down to, get that down to twenty-eight.
Really very good.
You know what it costs to build a road?
I.
And adding eight more feet to it?
Charles can do it.
Yeah, but it's probably cheaper than having to build zang sidewalks.
We don't have to have them now.
I know it. I mean, it.
I'm just saying, if you could do it on one side.
Uh, we thought about that. We did, we had that in there first, and I was worried about, about the traffic and people walking with their bags.
Well, I said, in a, in a minor subdivision, you know, it's, and that's what we're talking about here, is minor subdivision.
Yeah, that's true.
New roads.
They'll be parking on it, you know that. If it's that wide, then that's where they're gonna park.
We talked about that too. We know.
I don't sure what you're talking about.
But they'd be parking on that.
Say about that?
We didn't.
College sheriff.
I get it, I get it. Don't, don't, I don't feel bad, I get her too. She's in my office once a month, and, uh, on the phone three times a week. So I know exactly what you're talking about.
Well, I think people are just look, they just feel that, that this would improve quality of life. And that's, that's, that's where it comes from. And I looked at it from a standpoint, I understand that, I hate sidewalks. Uh, they're just a, a nuisance, but that's neither here nor there, it's just me.
Well, I don't hate them, they're just hard to deal with.
My twenty-three years, I, it's never been brought up. I, I know Katie wants it brought it up, but.
Ain't that, though, ain't that for a, on a, on a different zone, or?
Well, you know, sidewalks.
What's city dangers do?
City dangers require sidewalks.
Okay, well, tell them, tell Katie to move downtown. Well, you know, that's, that's the place for it, is what I'm saying. Out in the county's not the place for it. Down here, urban area, that's where we need it.
We're in sidewalks, desperately need it.
That's exactly right.
A picture of downtown Knoxville without sidewalks.
Correct.
I mean, for example, you know, or, or.
But not in Chested Hill.
But, you know, not, not my Farmington subdivision. I, I don't need sidewalks, everybody walks or rides their bike in the correct direction.
We're, we're addressing issues here that were presented to us to try to address.
He's trying to do something that work.
So, that's what we, I, that's the only thing I know, come up with, after I've, I've talked to different people, this was just a suggestion. It, it, whether or not we go through with it, that's, that's a different thing, but that's the only way I knew how.
I didn't come up here and say I'm against everything you're doing. I'm all about, I'm all about trying to do a good job. And you're proud of something when you leave there, rather than turn your head when you drive by. You know, you're kinda proud of it.
No.
Whatever you do, public care is next month.
I, I, I know it.
I assume you'll be.
Well, the public's gonna love every bit of this, the developers or not.
I know, I know.
You're not gonna have a whole lot of public here.
I already know how it's gonna line out, yeah. I know what's gonna line out.
And that next one's gonna be it.
Well.
But.
Putting that, making everybody put underground electric. I don't know that legal to do that. What's electric up to say about that?
Well, that's Brian.
That's their, that's their, that's their preference.
So here's what we've put in there. Alright, so it goes in there, as far as that goes, uh, if your local utility comes back and says, we don't want underground. Then they go overhead.
They go overhead. It's like.
I've never seen a local utility tell me anyone. They've always told me, what, what you wanna do here? Cows.
We'll process it either way.
Cows is a big deal. Some places it's not feasible to go underground. You know, some places it's been better.
Few Appalachian, well, Appalachian costs double, cause you gotta use their guys. And that, it's, it's just not, it's not, that's, that's the reason. On, 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 most people go overhead, because they can't afford it. Where we're gonna put in a half a mile a day, they're gonna put in about two hundred feet. Has a rule.
Alright, I, I, I know.
And, and then you gotta double everything too, don't you? Don't you, you put two in?
If, if you're going underground, you have to have somebody do the digging.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll come in and lay pipe, and put the pipe in the ditch when it's open and stuff. So I mean, it's, it's a ton of footage done in today's time in a lot of places. Uh, but there was a cowl adjustment, cause for several years, Appalachian bore the brunt of the increased cowl material. And the developer wasn't having to pay that, and they adjusted a few years back, and everybody saw sticker shot when it went up three times.
What we saw was the difference in the, we got the ditch open, and with our guys, we gotta go. Appalachian comes at a certain time and leaves at a certain time, and if they just brought two hundred foot pipe, that's all they're putting in. Where we might have enough for, you know what I'm saying? You're not working for, you're working for Appalachian. You really don't care if you put in a half a mile a day or thirty feet, you're getting paid the same. Well, we're not. We got to go. And then, plus Appalachian has to, if you put it underground, you gotta put two in, right?
No, you, you just, you put one, we'll have, we'll have a, what's called a loop feed.
To put another conduit or something in?
Just put one conduit in on primary lines.
Okay.
And it makes a loop feed, that way if you have outages in the middle of the night, you can isolate the outages and keep everybody's power.
Yeah, I, I know that.
Reliability, it's one.
Every time somebody had it, it cost them, they had, they had, okay, if you just got one line out there then, and they know where to loop it.
If you got a radio feed to one house, no. But I mean, if you're going in a subdivision, you're gonna have a loop feed throughout the subdivision.
I understand.
It's, it's gonna, it'll, it'll leave here, and it'll circle throughout the subdivision.
Where you catch it some other way.
You can catch it, and you can isolate that bad section of the line, and get everybody's power back on. Unless it's your seven oaks.
I don't, I don't know. I guess, try to keep all the electric lines in the ground. I mean, I like them where I can see them, sometimes, don't you?
I, I do like seeing them. That's one of the bad things about underground, it's, you know, you're taking the map to be honest, and a lot of times it's not.
Might be here, it might not. Now, that Katie guy done dug into this over here.
E- every, every, every year, every little bit, if you're making improvements in those things, then your subdivisions are a whole lot more liable, looking at the maps and seeing what's going on. And it, it's ideally, if I was developing a subdivision, I'd love to have it underground.
That's the way we done it. I just, I done one, I did, we did, me and Kent did one, we put everything underground. I mean, I like the way it looks.
It looks, looks better, and you can go to some of these places, it's all overhead, and you've got everybody fighting to get a fiber line on the pole, and telephone line on the pole, and a cable line on the pole.
Yeah, they got all in there and vote for me stickers to tape to them, or staples to them. How many staples can you get in a lot?
Oh, I remember I took that down downtown, it must've been a great deal of millions.
We actually don't allow that, the same as you get, same as you can't park in the walking area.
I understand.
So, there again, if, uh, we put that, uh, that's in there just for that very reason, it's for, it's an aesthetic thing, but then there again, if, uh, the electric company comes back and says. You can't do it, and you come back to us.
Electric company would tell you, Katie, there's rocks out here.
A lot of rock will be an issue, uh. I'm trying to think, but, and, and that's really a stake and tag, that's Marty Mills' question, or Ronnie Cox's question. I don't know the reasons why you couldn't do it. Uh, so, so, something else too would be, uh, probably slope.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if you've got a cowl face out there, you ain't gonna try to put four foot ditch inside of it.
Ain't gonna beat no more of that.
Ten percent sloper less.
It may be flat where it's going, and they may zigzag, we don't wanna go along the road, though, we don't wanna go straight shot.
Well, in Jersey County, we deal with what, there's about, was there four or five district, utility districts that provide power to Jersey County? You got.
You see Cox come in over.
Seaberry County, Rock County.
You've got M U S, K U B and.
Yeah.
Appalachia.
So, you know, we're dealing with five different.
Probably gonna get more and more ways to look.
Uh, so, that's why I say, uh, we're, we're just gonna leave it up to the, uh, basically, when you come in and say, this is what we want. But if they say you can't do it or whatever and you bring us a letter stating that, then.
Sort of like fire hydrant.
Yeah, we're not gonna make you do it.
I appreciate y'all letting me sit around here and talk to you about this.
We're glad to have you, Eddie.
Appreciate your input.
Alright, what about section eight? Permanent ease across no more than one property may be allowed as a necessary access for the creation of no more than one lot.
That's a clarification of the way it's written now.
It's just a clarification. Alright, it's just a clarification.
Yeah, we don't want, we don't want an easement winding through several lots and people ended up using it. We want, this was designed really for. To go across one lot to create one lot to the rear where somebody wants to put their grandson's or son's house or whatever or. I mean, when it goes across one lot, it also run up a, a stem or a corner of the lot. Doesn't have to be a, a square lot to a, to another square lot.
Okay, but if I read this right, the way it is now, cause Jock used to do this a lot. Because what he would do was, is that he would get his road in here. Well, the road front is coming off is like this.
There's his fifty foot.
And so there's his fifty foot, but he would always come out there and build a driveway for the people.
For everybody to drive on.
For everybody to drive on. So he, he may have to come across two lots to get that there. So this takes that away. I wouldn't, I was, I was never sort of against that.
It says it may be allowed. I don't, I don't understand. I'm like you, I don't understand.
So.
Oh, one lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One lot.
I don't think we ever had that in there.
Jock's serving thirty lots.
Well, not necessarily, but I mean.
He had three or four lots.
He'd had three or four lots, but, but here's the thing. He built them a nice driveway to get in and out of the property.
He did.
But it went across other people's properties.
He did.
So.
This was originally designed, Eddie, to make it where somebody who had a piece of property that there wasn't a good way to get back to, they'll say the rear portion. But it was worthy of maybe being a family member's house or something and we had several cases like this.
So you let them put an easement back there for one lot?
For one lot.
We do that today.
We do that anyway.
We do that today, yes.
But now we get three lots.
But this, but this, well, this, this, this better defines it.
Okay, wasn't in the book.
From the way it's written.
It was like a.
In the book, it's a little bit.
We voted on it a year ago, but we never put it in there.
I understand. Well, I think, I might get, catch thunder with all my constituents, but I think that, uh, you ought to make it, if you got, wherever you're coming off the road, I think it ought, it should be, uh. Should have, that's where your driveway's at. I don't, like Jock did now.
Yeah, we don't do that.
I had a sit, where, where we do the twenty yard. I got my fifty foot, but I'm gonna have an easement over here. You don't allow that. You don't do that no more? I had a situation yesterday in a different county to where the guy said, uh, and they allow twenty-five foot fee simple.
Strip going there.
It's gonna be about six hundred foot stem to five acre track. Then I had to put a right of way, way around down through here to get to the road.
Right.
His twenty-five foot was not accessible.
Oh, that's Jock there.
I, I know.
It wasn't accessible, but I'll tell you what it was good for. And that, and that's what his point was and they passed, they let him do it. That's all I can get water and power in here is on that twenty-five foot. I can drive anywhere I wanna drive, but my water and power.
Yeah.
I gotta own that. Nobody's gonna let me come through here. Well, so he put his utilities on that.
You know, here's my, here's my thing with it, with easement like that, okay? So let's say for instance, we, we, you did the plat and we saw that and we said, you know what? Good luck getting your road up through there. And he says, I know, big deal. And then after this recorded, he just goes over there and works out a deal, gets the easement across his, uh, for a driveway, across his neighbor's for, as far as that goes, where he was gonna go anyway. And it takes it and records it. He don't even have to come here before us to do that.
I see what you're saying. He just went right around.
Yeah, he, he just.
He just did the deed.
Yeah, he just did it to deed. And, and there's nothing that says that you can't do that.
So now he's got a joint, uh, he's got a joint easement out there that nobody has made its agreement on. You know, it's gonna keep it a.
Yeah.
Don't have a nine-one-one deal on it where nobody knows how to get back there.
When it comes to the sub breaks though, what we, what we wanna make sure we do is if we allow any lots to be created, that they have a legitimate. Road frontage or legitimate access to a road and they can be accessed. If they go back out there and they. Talk to their neighbors and say, I wanna use your driveway jointly and all that sort of thing. I don't really care about that. The fact is the lot, if it's ever transferred, it's got, it's got road frontage or, or an easement. And it's, it's not encumbered, um, by not having, I mean, it's not encumbered because it has access.
Well, I think you're, you're, y'all are charged by protecting the public just like I am in a lot of ways. And that's what you're doing. You're saying, hey, we're gonna create a lot. It's gonna have to be able to use it.
Right.
And that's what about half of this stuff in here is, especially your first one and all that. You know, if we're gonna create a lot.
Let's use it.
Let's make it usable.
Yeah.
We gotta access it and, and.
And be able to build on it.
Yeah. Now that way, yeah, I, I understand.
Yeah, that's where we're coming from, yeah.
Alright, so. Uh. So we've got a public hearing next month.
So if you go tweaky, then you tweak it tonight.
So we need to go back through these and, and determine what we're gonna leave in here and what we're gonna take out. And let's look at number one, adequate building size. Are we comfortable with that? We wanna leave that in there. Are we good? Are, are you good with that?
I'm comfortable with it.
Alright, I am too.
I am too.
Alright. Alright, for number two on the flag lots, I saw, I know we sort of just throw this in there this time. We don't, we can take that out if you want to and discuss, and, and look at it later. Because the numbers that I put in here were just numbers that, that were random and I just knew that when I told David we typed it up, that would be subject change if you wanted to change it.
Well, I, I would appreciate you looking at that a little more. I, I still ain't getting in my head even how to explain it to people. I, I could explain it to Eddie, but I think y'all did it tonight, Eddie.
I just, I wanna know where you come up with the stem. If it's, it'll be no longer than seventy-five foot, then there's no reason to have. You see what I'm coming from by doing it every day.
Seventy-five was just a number we started that, Eddie. It could be more than that. Whatever.
Right beside would be a shower lot.
Whatever board just decides, whatever this board decides the stem length wants to be, it can be, okay?
Yeah, but do you wanna do that tonight?
Well, if, if we're not ready, we won't.
Okay.
That's what I'm asking. What I'm trying to do is get ready for this, this public hearing. If we don't feel comfortable with two, we take it out.
How would you figure? I'm just trying to figure, how would you figure out what that would be? That's tough, man.
Doesn't matter.
I sat down there and I played with it and played with it and played with it and see what was come up with and everything else. And the first thing I thought was, and I just took me a. It said, I, I was, I put down fourteen hundred foot road frontage. How many lots can I get in here? I started doing it, doing it both ways and everything else. And if I have a seventy-five foot stem, it's a whole lot, it, 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 it works out better for me. Just go with a hundred and ten foot lots and go, go down the road instead of.
If that property lays like it to.
Yeah, I know.
Could you strike the seventy-five foot, keep everything else and put the word adequate in there?
Well.
You got a thousand foot on your road, your subdivision road, ain't you?
Yeah.
I'd like to keep it the same as that.
Well, what do you do if you've got a, so, so you're saying if you've got developments, got more than a thousand foot, that they can't?
Let's talk about a flag law. I ain't worried about. I'm talking about, I go out here and cut out a, a lot for Joe Blow, the farmer. My son wants to build right here and that's, that's fifteen hundred foot from the road. And I gotta get him some road finished. I gotta put a stem that's fifteen hundred foot long.
I, I understand that. I, I.
Seventy-five ain't gonna get it. That's where I'm coming.
Okay, look, what we're try, the, the thing this was to eliminate was.
Mailboxes, man.
Mailboxes and driveways down, down a, a stretch of county road there, uh, where, you know, if you would, if you subdivided them out and you didn't have any stem lots, then basically how many? How many mailboxes would there be there? How many driveways would there be? And then if I added stems in there, am I getting more driveways? And you are. Because off of that fifty foot, you're getting two driveways because you got a twenty-five foot easement.
You're getting three.
Three. You're getting three off a stem. And so that's three driveways. So the, the stem lots you're picking up, that, that's why I'm, that's what's happening.
There's more ways to skin a cat. I mean, you can put that, alright, we ain't gonna put the two together and then you gotta go, uh, four hundred foot before you can put anymore.
Well, we talked about that too.
You can do that. That's the way a lot of counties do.
We, 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 we looked at very same thing.
They do that and they'll say, uh, uh, and then you widen your lots too.
On the road. We could, we could, we could come in and say the minimum lot, uh, road frontage on, on a, on a lot is a hundred, hun- hundred, hundred feet a foot.
Well, and that's where.
Well, another thing too, you were telling that guy and like I said, I wouldn't put in, I mean, you told him wrong that the minimum frontage was a hundred. That's wrong. Minimum frontage is fifty, a hundred foot at the building line.
Right, that's what we're looking at is the building line.
You didn't tell that back.
Well, I know.
Tell him it was a hundred foot wide.
Well, he only had, he only had it at ninety-one foot the whole way back and I knew that wasn't a foot.
It could've been ninety-one, as long as it was a hundred foot at the building line.
Yeah, but it wasn't. It was higher, yeah.
It was all the way back.
Yeah, it was not, but it was, the lines were parallel.
They were parallel wide.
Yeah.
Well, the only thing, and when they brought that up, Eddie, the only thing I said before, if you, and, and I've seen it over the years, you only got the fifty foot road frontage. So you own, you got ten acre.
Yep.
What do you do then?
You, uh, you either buy your small ground or you get three lots of it.
Or you build your road in there as a subdivision road in there and, and subdivide.
That's why the fifty foot requirements of that, so future development in the.
I'm talking about family.
Family ain't gonna build no road.
Well, I know they're not.
They've only got fifty foot.
I got chickens. They, they, they can do three.
Not if we do more than fifty foot.
Uh, no, that's what, well, he's not, he's not talking about changing that to him.
Oh, you're not changing that one?
Not the width. He's talking about how far back do you go before the lot is?
He's talking about road frontage, wasn't he?
Stem.
Well, I thought you were talking about road frontage.
You're talking about the stem.
I thought you.
Right here about the road.
No, he's.
Must have a stem no longer than seventy-five, not wider, but no longer. And if that's wrong, tell it.
No, 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 that's what, look, the reason the seventy-five come in there was this, is that if you've got a road down here and you gotta have forty thousand square feet. One of these dimensions is set, then this other one's gonna be set, okay? No matter what, to get, to get to forty thousand square feet. So it's either you make the stem longer. Then, and then, then they have, don't have to have as much road frontage. Does that make sense?
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah. Well, you're gonna have to, because wherever this, wherever this stem is, this lot line on this one, on this road lot is gonna be back there to it, right there. It's gonna, that's where it's, that's where the stem's gonna end at the back part of this lot, wherever it is comes off the road. Whatever, whatever you do this right here dictates how much this lot right here has road frontage based on the zoning, because that's what your lot size has gotta be. So, like I say, it, this stem length, this stem length can be whatever you want it to be. It doesn't have to be seventy-five. It ju, that's just a number that I put in there. It's an example, okay? So.
I see what you're saying.
But it, but you know.
What we do.
So what is a good number?
We go the road and we got a lot, we gotta have lots here and we're gonna come in here between them, probably where you can, you've got good site distance. And we're gonna put two back here. You know, to, to the lots. And then we're gonna get as many as we can get. We're gonna get three off this and we're gonna get three off that one. So that stem might go back here. How far?
Long way.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying? We're gonna get three here. Well, this one's got frontage. We're gonna get, this one's got road frontage. They're letting me use that, but we ain't counting it. Then we're gonna get one here and one here and one here, cause you can run three off fifty foot. We're gonna do the same thing here. And that's what I'm saying. If that's stem length. It may be gosh, buddy.
See, but then, then I, then that's what I've got then. I've got, I, I got that fifty foot right there. I've got how many driveways for each one of them lots?
Well, you think about, you got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight people right there.
Using it, that coming down there that has to build a driveway come out there. Alright.
But they're all coming out on one road, Terry. They ain't got eight sep- separate, they ain't got eight separate driveways. It's gotta be better.
Well, he's right on that.
What, what?
What, what John Neil's talking about.
But they would have the right to have, but they would have the right to have their own driveway because we don't dictate in there that, that they can't.
They would, yeah.
Uh, not on those easements that, that they don't, they, they.
They don't.
They could.
They could be eight driveways in there.
They could.
Coming out there.
Forty long. They won't, they won't. That's the reason for having the easement. I know what you're saying.
They don't, they could.
They can't.
You know, but that's the reason having the easement is to share the driveway.
Well, yeah.
We had a problem on, on the county, we had a problem on the county road with stem lots. And basically what it was is that, uh. What it would all end up being is, is when it's all said and done, they started building their driveways, this, that, whatever. Next thing you know, everybody was building the, the driveways.
They couldn't get along sharing it, so they built their own.
Well, and then what happened was they ended up building on.
You did borrow some drugs up there. We had that one long driveway.
They, they built the ru, they built the driveway, they got, they got off of the easement. And then, then the neighbor come in there and said, that owned it and said, uh-uh. And so they had to move it and it cost the guy a chunk of change.
Well.
Four driveways.
It's like putting that house in the wrong spot.
I know what, I know, but I'm just saying, this is where, this is sort of how this got started, uh, to a certain extent. And so this is where it's at. And that's what we were trying to do to, to correct it, okay? Uh, I, I thi, it's just my opinion. I think we take two out for the, for right now until we come up with something better. And that won't be, that won't be on the public hearing. I, I, that's my opinion. I, I'm gonna.
I'll be looking at some different alternatives to that for you, Terry.
Well, I, I've looked and looked and looked and I got stuff from everywhere and everybody, you know, it's the same problem.
You look to Washington County. That's what I do. I look at different counties, different things.
That's what I did. I had a bunch of stuff came in there and looked at it and I was thinking.
I'm doing a big subdivision Jonesboro right now and they won't let you put the two of them together. And you gotta go so far and then they can put two more.
And we thought about that.
They done, they do, they do that. And, uh, there's one other thing that I, that they, it was a pretty good idea. I don't know, I cannot remember what it was. I remember those two things when I was looking at the rig.
But that could very well, we looked, we thought about that. We, we looked at it and everything as far as that goes, but that might be an option, that you had two and then you had to go so far before you can do another one. So, alright.
Most time a site distance takes care of that problem, you know? If you can see good, have at it. But. Most time with our roads, you know, even certain places you can pull out and put a driveway.
Well, you know, now if you're, if you're, if you're doing that on a state road, T-Dot's gonna come out there and say yay, nay, whatever.
Yeah, on state road.
Okay, but now on a county road, you don't call Charles out there on, on those visits before you do it to, to make sure when he sits there and looks at it, that it's, the driveway's safe here.
I don't call Charles, but what I do is I just go by the rules we've always done. We use, what's the speed limit?
Well.
If it's forty-five, I gotta have four and fifty foot. If it's fifty, I gotta have five hundred. If it's twenty-five, I gotta have two and fifty. That's just the rules. That's our standards design rules that we've used for years.
What is speed limit on back road?
It'll be posted.
It ain't posted.
Well, yeah, there's a rule. If it's not posted, it's something. There's a rule.
I don't know what.
Well, you all go through there and shoot them.
Auntie Hutter ain't got that.
You go through there and shoot them.
Well, that's might be.
But that, no, every road's got a speed limit. Every, every road that I've ever been and done anything on that has a speed limit. If it's not posted, it's this. It's, it's a mountain or something.
Even say that on Charlie's.
Correct. So, and that's what we use to go by site distance.
Would Charlie post that?
So let me ask you a question.
Charlie post that?
He would, he would have it. There's, I mean, there's, there's, I think some.
That probably is.
Yeah, I think.
But that's the way we address the site distances.
It, it, it's got to be because you can't have somebody going down some of these roads running seventy mile an hour and saying.
Oh, Lord, they're not gonna.
Oh, God, you done done it badly lately.
Alright, so.
Wee.
So let me ask you this then. Alright, so, and you brought that up, okay? So if we have stem lots in there, basically. As far as that goes, would you be, uh. Putting a statement on there saying that these driveways meet those requirements as far as the site?
I don't, I don't design them or not. I'm not gonna get nobody killed. They're gonna come back on me. I'm not putting one there. You can look at any I got on stems that I do. They're not in no curve. If I can't see them, I'm not gonna do them. I'm gonna tell the owner, hey, I'm not doing that because I feel like that if I design that and cut that out, that I'm liable right there too. That way, I'm saying at the time I done it, I could see both ways, whatever the speed limit was. I could, I, I could see four hundred and fifty if, either way, if it, it was a, you know. Or, or whatever. I do it anyway. And I don't know what other surveyors do. They may cut it out wherever they tell them, but I'm not gonna put a driveway where somebody's gonna get killed. I'm just not gonna do it. I feel like I'm liable for, for designing it, you know?
We may come up with something in some language that comes in there then. If we come in here and we say, okay, we do, say we ta, we come in and say two stems beside each other and then somewhat, this is where we have other stems. What we talked about there.
You could do something like that. That'd help you a little bit.
And then what we would say is, is the locations of those stems or whatever, as far as that goes, that the site distance would meet the site distance requirements based on the speed limit of the road.
Correct. I mean, that's pretty simple.
And come up with like four hundred feet?
For a lot of places we go to cut something like that too. You know, alright, you got a guard rail here, you've got a bank here, you've got straight up. They aim it through four places you're gonna get in.
I know.
And you need to utilize those to develop the land. If that puts those stems close together, that may be something you could look at by, you know, saying, hey, this is not in stone here. This is the only place I can get in.
Yeah. Alright.
It, it says that Tennessee law on unmarked rural roads is fifty-five miles an hour.
Now, there you go.
Well.
Fifty-five?
Unmarked rural roads.
Well, there's a bunch of unmarked.
And a lot of them get posted, and the signs get took down.
Well, most of them are thirty, twenty-five and thirty, what we're, we're talking about.
Yeah.
It said residential area is twenty-five mile an hour, but it said un, unmarked rural roads, fifty-five mile an hour.
That means Auntie Holler.
Well.
Well, anyway.
There's a speed limit on them all. Every road in the county's got a speed limit on it. Charles can help you, we'll help us with that.
If you get the speed limit from Charles, and then, and he verifies that, then basically, then you know what your sight dis is gonna have to be based on that.
All we can do is go up to the county commission, get the speed limit changed. We've done that before.
So, well.
You say you're going to the commission then?
That's prob, I think that's some, I think that's something we're going to, uh, we'll look at, but I think right now, unless y'all don't feel kind, I think we should push the arrangement. This, this arrangement section out here, a little while until we determine on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe in the next year sometime.
Alright.
Terry, you're tired.
Section three, J, uh. We weren't, were we sure that legally, that we could make them put that statement on there?
I don't, I don't feel real comfortable with it, to be honest with you, because I think every situation would be looked at.
I, I, I think Doug's gonna tell you, you can't. I'll do variance. I'll help you out there and spread the word. They're not gonna, they're not gonna, I mean, don't ask them boys for a variance, or girls, ladies, they're not gonna do that.
Well, I was always told by certain lawyers that, and since this board never has turned one down, we'd probably lose if they took this to court, if we ever turn.
Oh, because of the, because of your set of precedent?
Well, the thing is, is that, what we're saying, we've always granted them for topography, okay?
So, all they gotta ask for is.
So, what we're trying to take is topography out of the equation.
I don't believe it.
Yeah, alright.
You gonna leave that in there or take that?
I'd, I'd really prefer Doug to say yay or nay on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna try.
I mean, what, any other, and what do y'all think?
Why don't you just take the thing out of your, for topography, is that a statement? The, the one that you're hugging your head on about the, you know, we'll grant you a variance if you have topography issues. Just take that out.
Look for zoning variances.
They don't have problem.
You're not doing it for zoning.
I know, but what I'm saying is, for zoning variances, topography's key. But for subdivision regulations, the state law doesn't address, address them. Variances at all. It's whatever.
I didn't know.
It's whatever the, um.
I took that topography out of it then, and you wouldn't have to, they wouldn't be worrying you for it then, 'cause it wouldn't be in your rule.
But of course, actually, when it comes right down to it, the variances are really from the zoning, not from the something, well.
From the zoning, yeah, you have boys out in the field, yeah.
Alright.
That's where they always stick yet, though. Oh, I've got topography issues.
So you do. Everybody's got a topography issue, right?
Alright, it's going, section four, we decided that we should leave that in there now. Alright, so, so that won't be in the resolution, uh, section four won't, because if we're gonna leave it in, it, it's already in.
Well, look at that statute, make sure I didn't tell you wrong.
How else were the state law changed?
I think, I think it needs to be amended to have that one particular statement added to it. Which states in there that the people have the right to come back and sue you. And, and that's all it says in there. It's the way it stated it. I don't have a copy of it with me.
What did Doug say? I can't remember.
Doug told me that it needed to be in the sub regs.
There you go.
So, it's, that, that, it's got, it's gotta be stated in there. And the reason is, is this, is I, I reached out to M-Tas for it, and they sent me a thing where Blunt County. Added it to theirs, because it, that's what they felt like they needed to do. So, I think as long as you've got the statement in there, you're covering yourself. I, I just, the way I interpreted the statement, I thought that basically, that we weren't gonna be able to require the people to ask them to give the twenty-five foot when they did a development anymore, without the county having to pay for it.
I don't know what statement needs to go in there. It has to do with public chapter eleven twenty-eight.
Yeah, it does.
And it's, um.
And it can just go in there verbatim, as, as exactly what, the way it's stated in there. If it just goes in there verbatim, we add another, uh, something else to it, but it, it needs to go in there. I, I, I'm, it, it may never come up, but.
No, but it probably needs to be in there.
Yeah, there's a lot of things that never come up, but they come up.
Yeah.
I think it don't.
Okay.
Okay, alright. So, section six, it's either this, it's either, it's either we want the walkways, or you don't want the walkways.
Well, I gotta think about that, it's gonna leave you, what, eleven foot on each side of the curb?
Ain't no curb.
Okay, eleven foot on each side of asphalt? That's enough for your utilities?
Well, if you, I guess, because cities that put sidewalks in there, they get, had to squeeze their utilities in there.
Cities, you said she'd be fine, this ain't on the side of the mountain somewhere.
Yeah, I, I, speaking as a listener, I, I would never.
You know, I'm not talking about nothing damn dangerous, I'm all for it.
I would never vote for that. But that's just me. I ain't got a vote in there.
I'd like to see you change your, change your, your road length from twenty to twenty-four, and forget, forget the rest of it. I just think twenty's too narrow, as far as I'm concerned.
We had it, we, we took it to twenty-four, and that gave us one side to walk on. But then, the worst fear was, is that.
I don't want them walking in the road nowhere.
Well.
Well, I know what I'm saying. You know what I mean? That's where you get killed.
I think the biggest fear on that twenty-eight is, everyone parking it, I guarantee you.
They won't park in four, they might park in eight.
People, people park it, yeah, when they're twenty, they park in.
But this will be worse.
You're right. They'll park, they'll park in.
I don't care what you say, they park in there.
This will be worse.
If a developer wants his place to look nicer than one up the road, then he will.
No, he won't.
He's gone, Jerry.
No, he won't.
Is it just one person pushing this, or is there more on board?
I just got it pushed for me for one, okay?
I'll call her on the way home. I'll get off of you.
You braver than I am.
Well, she ain't no bear dog.
Well, all I'm saying is.
Drowsy lot.
I, what I've found all along is this, is that if developers, if you don't make them do it, they won't do it.
That's right.
Well, a lot of the cheap, yeah, I know what you're saying, but I like the twenty-four, I like the twenty-four on your road surface, and the.
It would be nice to see something like this, that's implacable, before we say that.
I'm surprised that Charles won't say that at eight feet to keep up. I'm really surprised.
He said that he could live with it.
He don't, he'd rather have it eighteen foot wide, that's less for him to, that's why, you see what I'm saying? That's less for him to keep up.
That's beside the point.
I think twenty-four feet.
Is plenty.
That's what you had in there.
Well, that, that's my subdivision, and, and, like, there's three hundred houses.
We built the subdivision, we just done, if it was twenty, the rules were twenty, and we done it twenty-four anyway.
My, 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 my road does not have any stripes on it.
They put curb on it. Twenty-four foot inside.
They just use it, I mean, it's, and there's never a problem.
Well, we did.
So, what do you think? I mean, are you comfortable with that?
I'm.
I mean, I don't ca, I mean.
I'm trying to keep it simple, but I see where it works in my neighborhood, I mean, 'cause I, I don't look like I walk very often, I have it lately, but.
But you don't, nothing in your neighborhood striped or marked, though?
Nothing striped or marked, not centerline.
That's, that's Charles ain't gonna come through there and strip it.
No, he's gonna, he better do it.
Yeah, as long as it's on the left.
Wow.
No, I think that says something else.
But these are, I'm talking about minor subdivision roads, I'm not talking about.
Yeah.
You know, Dumplin Valley, or, or one thirty-nine, or any of that stuff. I'm talking about.
You're just talking about new.
Where there's houses all around the, the, like, suburban subdivision.
That strapping is.
Do twenty-four and then let them.
I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just telling you from my experience. I'm not trying to muddy the water, I'm just telling you.
You've been on that for the first four, five years.
The only reason I wanted twenty-eight was, is I felt like it gave you four foot on each side, if it, if it ended up being a walkway. Now, that way, when you're walking, you're all, can always face the traffic. Originally, we had it twenty-four, David had it twenty-four, he said this. Is, as, as far as that goes, which gives you, basically, you still probably, you got some room, i, i, you know, it just depends on how much traffic you're gonna have out, out through this, as far as that goes.
Leave it twenty-eight and go with it. If they park in it, you can walk around it. I mean, how many people walking anyway? I mean, at the end of the day, they, I mean.
I think it's just way too wide.
The, here's, here's the one thing. Here's the only thing, only reason that you look at it from this standpoint is, is now, is that when you do a development now. You end up, you're gonna have to put the cluster boxes in there for your mail. So, you'd have to get your car, drive out there to your mailbox, or whatever, or you're gonna walk.
Now, you don't have to do those cluster boxes.
If the post office says you don't.
Don't say you do.
But if they post.
No, they don't neither. I went, we went round and round on that with our new subdivision. That, if you read their rules, it is a real strong suggestion, it is not a law. And we put mailboxes up.
Well, they caught Chad down there.
I know, but I did, I did, I told him, I said, okay, I've read it, well, it says, we suggest you real strongly to do this. I said, show me the law, says I gotta do it. Your federal law, your federal, they couldn't come up with it, we, we put up mailbox.
Well, people would rather have mailbox.
People wants their own box.
That's exactly right.
Uh, the postal service workers, uh, we had that, th- those, says, look here, we get paid by the box.
That's right.
We don't get paid but half if it's in a cluster.
Really?
They're, they're putting it to their own employees. That's the wor, I, the, the, the girl that carries the mail, I said, hey, I'll do whatever you wanna do. You're the one to tote the mail out here, what do you want? She said, I want separate boxes. Why? She said, well, I get paid so much a box, if you put it in that cluster, I don't get paid but for one stop. Or something like that, it was like hardly nothing.
Right.
And I said, okay, that's what I'm gonna do, because you're the one bringing it to me, so I'm gonna do what you want. If you want a cluster, I'll put a cluster. If you want boxes, I put, so we put boxes. Con, uh, brick boxes. Well, they can find all they want to, they're gonna have to come up with, with a law that says you gotta do it. That suggestion don't work.
Well, I thought it was, they might, I, I thought you that, they might, the lady and I.
Plus, how else are you gonna have a mailbox with a big bass open mouth?
Yeah, yeah, none of them are gonna watch it.
Or an orange UT that can, that can be seen, if you're just in a cluster.
That's a display of their, their personality, their mailbox.
Well, anyway. Uh.
Twenty-four.
Alright. What, what is it, twenty-eight, twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
I got twenty-four.
I'll be a jigger, and I'll say, put in, say, put mailboxes. I like, I like.
I don't even think you have to vote on that.
Well, I, I know, but I mean, if, if.
They may place a law tomorrow, they ain't gonna want that now.
If, if the mailbox is as part of the reason that Terry stated on that, I'm a jigger on twenty-four.
Well, here, here was my thing, is, is this, is that the only reason I did it was, is it because I was trying to make it to where. If people, you're, if you're putting this in here for the purpose of people to be able to walk, I want them to be able to walk at least face traffic, so that basically, you know, or whatever. And so, but that don't have to be the case.
I don't think traffic is issuing those nine or seven.
And it may or may not be.
I don't think walking's issuing, like, I was saying.
It's not for me.
So, let's, let's, let's push it.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, alright, so there. Alright, and section seven is, is, is the electric utilities, uh.
I mean, it, it, it's almost like the cluster mailboxes. It gives you an app.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
The way it's, it stays, it gives you, a, and, I mean, we'd love to see it in the ground, you, you wouldn't have what we had this morning up here at the.
Yeah.
Fight Rankin Road, with the dump truck coming out, raised up, and break three, three-phase poles.
Well, if he runs over a trench forward, it's like, do the same.
What about anyway?
It was just one trench. Not, not three poles.
I understand, I understand.
There again, if the utility comes in and says you don't.
Don't have to.
You don't have to.
Just like fire hydrant do.
Alright, alright, and then the next one then is basically, uh, it's just clearing up, it's a clarify.
Clarify, yeah, it's not written very well the way we have it now. It doesn't change anything, though.
Okay. Anything else, because then, basically, when David comes back with this, there'll be the public hearing next month over these very things that we're gonna have in there. And then, we will, after the public hearing's in, it'll come up to us to adopt.
Terry, I'm gonna send you, it'll be both the updates tomorrow morning.
Alright.
And you can look at them, and if you're okay with them, if you, if you agree, that's what we've decided. I'll provide Tim with the same thing, and, um, it'll be available for, um, anybody to come, who might want somebody to look at it.
Did you put that in there that I could be in office, I mean?
I think I did.
Didn't?
Alright.
Terry, you know what helps that good help? Prom, school buses, when they lets kids off.
They don't never use them no more, do they?
Nobody rides them more, do they?
They're, they're. It's lined up at the school, picking them up.
It would, it would help to a certain extent, yeah, a little bit, yeah.
Five, it's on there.
Not stable life, you know what I mean?
There's a lot, there's a lot of kids in this county still get around school buses.
Alright.
You think, no, no, Lord, no, they ain't, and they ain't got the drivers to do it.
I know.
They ain't got the drivers to do it, just like the mines they got the men to put in there.
That's true.
It's pitiful. I mean, he just.
Well, how many do they employ?
Nobody wants to grow.
I don't know.
Well, they got five.
Oh, the mine job's a place to be.
How many, how many have they got working over there?
I don't have no idea.
Well, you know, if you think about it, about a five hundred, eighty short ain't that bad.
No, but they used.